March nineteenth at just before two o'clock. Could we get a roll call?
Commissioner Perkins, here. Commissioner Sager.
Here.
Commissioner Stahl.
Here.
Chair Wheeler.
Here.
Commissioner Carpenter, maybe late.
Yep.
Commissioner Hartwig.
Here.
And then Commissioner Tucker is absent.
Okay, perfect. Looks like we got a quorum so we can do business. Uh, first up on the agenda for us is the approval of the January fifteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting minutes.
I move to approve.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Do we need to discuss? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries and we have one abstaining. Perfect. Uh, we're gonna jump right into public hearings. Thanks, everybody for coming. We don't normally have a crowd at the Estacada Planning Commission Meeting, so hopefully this is a good thing, not a bad thing. We're gonna jump into conditional use twenty twenty-five dash zero one dash S. This is the Royal Mark Car Wash. And for those of you that are new to our Planning Commission Meetings, what we'll do is we'll have a staff report on both of the items on the agenda. We have a time for the Planning Commission to ask some questions. We will exit out of the Planning Commission Meeting into a public hearing of which we will invite members of the guests to come up and, uh, members of the audience to come up and speak, whether it's, uh, on behalf or against the application, uh, or if you just wanna come up and have your voice heard. Uh, we'll then exit back into the, uh, out of the, uh, public hearing portion and into the Planning Commission Meeting again, uh, of which we will, uh, as a body, make a decision. Uh, I believe both of these are conditional uses, so they are both our decisions.
That's right.
Um, and then we'll get into it if, if needed, but there'll be an appeal process to the City Council and beyond if needed. So with that, uh, Alan, if you could dive into the staff report for this first conditional use.
All right. Thank you, Alan. Good afternoon, Commissioners and members of the public. Thanks for coming today. Um, so I'm going to present staff's report on the Royal Mark Car Wash application. That's twenty twenty-five dash zero one dash C U. It's a local phone number. All right, just some general information about the application. The applicant is, um, Tony De Hebre. I'm sorry if I mispronounced that. Um, in Mukelteo, Washington. Also, sorry if I mispronounced that. Um, the project manager is Michael Williams of Livermore Architecture and Engineering. I believe both of them are in the audience today and, um, we will likely be hearing from them a bit later. Um, the site address in the city is at six oh five Northwest Wade Street. I'll show some maps later so we can get oriented. The legal description is shown on the screen there for anyone who's interested, and this is for property in the general commercial or C one zone. And the proposal today is a conditional use request to include a drive-through car wash as part of a redevelopment of the gas station on Northwest Six and Wade Streets. Um, we also received comments from the city engineer and the fire marshal on this application. Okay, now for some maps. So this is just, um, this is the subject site. It's kind of a, kind of a faint blue line there, but it's right in the center of the screen. Um, it's an aerial photo at the corner of Northwest Six and Wade. Um, you can see up to the top. Can you see my cursor yet? Here is Wade Creek Park and the skate park. Over here, we have Whispering Pines Retirement Home. I believe this is Teen Challenge right across the street to the south. Um, and then we have, uh, scattering of houses and some, some retail businesses in the vicinity as well. And then zooming in, here's a, just a close-up of the subject site. It's flat with a minimal, minimal slope. Um, there's just a field there currently on the, on the western half of the site. Currently, the gas station here, and the proposal is basically to expand this gas station. I'll, I'll show you a site plan in a second. Um, but yeah, expand this on the whole site with a car wash on the west side and convenience store. And looking at the comp plan map and the zoning of the property, um, as I said, it's currently Zone General Commercial or C one. Retail uses around there. I, I, I went over, it is surrounded by properties that are also Zone General Commercial, um, though many of the uses are not commercial right now. Um, and here is the site plan that was submitted by the applicant. Um, it's kinda hard to see here, but there is landscaping around the perimeter of the property proposed. And then the new pumps are in the general area, the existing pumps, and then we have a convenience store planned with a car wash just to the west. And so you can see where the car wash is. It's the far western half of the, of the property, or western edge of the property. And so now I will go over the approval criteria for this application. And so first we'll look at the zoning code for the general commercial zone, and that's sixteen twenty-eight. And, um, conditional use, in the conditional use, use section, car washes are listed as a conditional use, so that is satisfied. And all relevant criteria in the standards section is also met or can be met with conditions of approval, including the setback requirements, building heights, and the standards for drive-through facilities. And then moving on to the chapter for conditional uses, that's EMC sixteen dot eighty-eight. Um, and I'm just gonna go through the five criteria in this subsection here that establish the approval, uh, for conditional uses. And so the first is that the proposed use is a conditional use in the underlying zones, which we just established. That the site characteristics are suitable for the proposed use. That the site and proposed development is timely, can be supported by existing systems such as water, sewer, transportation network, et cetera. Uh, that the proposed use will not alter the character of the surrounding area in a way that limits or impairs the use of surrounding properties. And finally, that the proposal satisfies the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan. And staff finds that all criteria in this section is met or can be met with conditions of approval. And moving ahead in this chapter. Sixteen dot eighty-eight dot O two O gives the Planning Commission authority to impose additional conditions which are considered necessary to protect the best interest of the surrounding area and the city as a whole. And so some of these kinds of conditions might look like the following: increasing lot size, limiting building heights, uh, increasing street widths, regulating hours of operation, required fencing or screening, et cetera. And so in response to resident concerns regarding car wash noise and construction disturbances, um, and basically to prevent the impairment of existing uses on neighboring properties, staff recommends that Planning Commission include the following two conditions of approval. So this first one here ensures that driveway access on the surrounding properties isn't impeded during construction. And then the second one, uh, requires the applicant to install some type of barrier or fencing to mitigate noise and provide a visual screen between the car wash facility and adjacent properties. And very importantly, if the Planning Commission does decide to include the second condition of approval, you'll need to determine the specifications of that barrier so that the applicant knows exactly what will be required, so that can happen during the discussion. And so the applicant did send an email this morning in response to the submitted public comment and the recommended condition of approval that I just read. And, um, just quoting from the email, "The owner will be installing a six-foot-high concrete masonry wall along the west property line to help mitigate noise and provide screening, visual separation." So I just included a visual here to show where the west property line is. I don't know if they're proposing to do it along the entire line. They can, they can, um, speak to that when they, when they have an opportunity to speak later. But that's basically what that looked like. Okay, so under our staff recommendation, uh, we find that the proposal can meet all applicable approval criteria, and we recommend approval of this conditional use request. And there are just five conditions of approval. I'll go over those really quickly. Uh, the first is that the conditional use approval is limited to just a car wash on the subject site. Number two, uh, requires a barrier to mitigate noise and provide a visual screen. The third, um, ensures access to surrounding properties, uh, just ensures that they remain unimpeded, unimpeded during construction. The fourth requires that building plans match the plan that's approved by Planning Commission today. And then the fifth, um, just limits the approval of this conditional use, um, to two years, so that basically the applicant would need to, at least begin construction on the car wash and development within the next two years for, for the approval to stay valid. Okay, so here are the next steps. A public, public comment. Um, like, the commission will have, uh, opportunities to ask questions and discuss. And again, just if that condition, um, regarding the barrier is, um, included in the decision, the Planning Commission should determine the specifications of that barrier. And then we'll be looking for a motion to approve, approve with changes or deny the application with findings. And that's staff's presentation.
Thank you, Alan. Uh, if any commission, any questions for staff at this point in time?
Just one.
Go ahead.
I'm sure that the homeowner next door has been contacted as to this, this meeting as for.
They're present. No, and they, and they're signed up to speak.
They are.
Yep.
I didn't see him. Oh, crap.
There's also a note in the packet from, from one of the people next door.
Alan, could you, uh, back up one slide for me?
Sure.
The conditional, uh, use approval is valid for two years, and you mentioned building must be started.
Yeah, so it's not that in two years they'll have to come back and say, can we still have a car wash? It would more, it's more just has substantial construction or development happened of the car wash in the next two years.
Is, is there any precedent or like cases that have, um, where, maybe they're stuck in permits for various reasons. Uh, is, is there extensions allowed, or is that something that we're able to discuss or dive into further?
There are.
I just try to think of future problems and trying to mitigate that for now versus.
Right.
Dealing with fuel tanks. I, I, I don't know that world at all, but I can only imagine who's involved with that and like the permitting process involved, so.
I believe that there is, um, yeah, there is an extension allowed. They just have to apply for an extension.
Okay.
It's either one or two years. And I believe the city would work with them, and if something like you're describing were to happen.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, if there's no further planning commission questions, then what we can do is we will, uh, enter into the public hearing. I'm gonna read a bit about the public hearing, and we'll have the applicant, uh, come up and speak, uh, along with anybody else. So. No further questions?
No.
At this point in time? Okay. Um, an issue, an issue which may be the basis for appeal to the City Council must be raised prior to the close of the record at the final evidentiary hearing on the specific application. Such issues shall be, shall be raised with sufficient specificity as to afford the City Council and other parties an adequate opportunity to respond to each issue. A failure of an issue to be raised at the hearing in person or by letter, or failure to provide sufficient specificity, uh, for the City Council and a party's inadequate opportunity to respond to the issue precludes an appeal to the City Council on that issue. With that, uh, would the applicant like to come up to the mic, uh, introduce yourself and, uh, give us a Reader's Digest version? If you, if you don't want to, you don't have to, but if, if you'd like to, you're more than welcome to. Uh, and again, just, uh, state your full name and address before the beginning.
Yeah, I'm, I'm Michael Williams. I, I'm not sure I really have anything to add. Alan was pretty, um, thorough in the presentation, so. Um, but I would be happy to field questions to the best of my ability.
As far as timeline goes, just a question, uh, do you see any issues with the two years of the conditional use permit?
We, we don't at this time, um, but on, on the understanding that there's two years and then a, like a possible one-year extension, that would be plenty of time.
Okay.
So.
And then as far as the additional, uh, uh, conditions of, uh, approval, one was the barrier, and then the other one was well, the noise that goes along with the barrier.
Driveway.
Oh, the driveway, thank you.
Well, we, we don't really anticipate any, uh, issues with, uh, driveway access. I mean, in the normal, you know, process of construction, there could be. We can't guarantee that there wouldn't be, but we don't see any work being done, uh, across people's driveways, so. Um, that would be for the contractor too to, you know, be a good neighbor as they work and, and coordinate and, uh, talk with them, so.
Okay.
But I, I don't foresee anything with that. PG has underground lines there anyway, so I don't think there's anything additional that'd be added.
Okay. Any further questions while we got them at the mic?
How do you tend to deal with, if, if indeed we go ahead and approve the car wash, how do you intend to deal with the noise of that?
Well.
I mean, other than the barrier, that's one, but.
Yeah.
Our operations.
How, yeah, we would adhere to, um, you know, the hours of operations that the city prescribes per the noise ordinance, so we can you know, have you state that at this meeting. That'd be kinda convenient for us too and the owner. Um, and the building for the car wash, you know, would be something substantial, um, constructability-wise that would help mitigate any kind of sound. Sure, that's, that's the understanding, so.
That's one thing we would do is the building of the car wash. We have another car wash. I'm the owner. My name is Rodney De Hebre. I'm Tony's wife. He wasn't able to attend, but I'm one of the owners of the facility, and we have several. We have several other car washes that are even adjacent to hotels, and there's really not that much noise. Usually the building is, is a big noise barrier, um, to the car wash.
So, yeah, that's, so I think that the building itself would be uh, containing the noise, and then the barrier, the, uh, along the west, uh, property line would go a long way to help mitigate that.
Sure. Okay.
For the conditional use, so we, we would adhere with any requirements for the conditional use.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, on this, you, I'm sure you've got an enclosed car wash, so the neighbors or whatever, wind's not gonna blow soap and uh, any other chemicals onto a, onto adjoining property.
No, it's a, yeah, it's a fully contained self-drive-through facility. So, yeah, there's, there's no open air washing or anything like that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any further questions for the applicant at this point in time? All right. Thank you, guys. We might call you back up. You never know. Is there anybody else who would like to speak on behalf of the application? Doesn't look like it. Uh, we do have one, somebody to speak, uh, a neighbor here, so you wanna go ahead and introduce yourself, Brian?
Yeah, I'm Brian Prokop. I'm the neighbor to the west of the proposed development. A couple of the questions that I did have have kind of been answered in your
microphone closer.
Conditions of, uh, approval there. And one of the questions was what kind of a privacy and, uh, noise mitigation barrier was gonna put it, be put up between the east border of their property or the west border of their property in my driveway there in the house? So that's one, that was one of my big questions. The second one was about my driveway access during the project, cuz I had noticed, um, previously this past summer, there were some uh, marks and stuff in my driveway there, so I don't know, are they gonna be excavating like in front of my property? I've got some Colorado Blue Spruce trees there, and I'm just curious, you know, um, how much they're gonna excavate around those, and I mean, that's fine, but, if they need to remove them, well, I'm not in a position to do that. I, I don't have equipment, so, um, I'm just kinda curious how that would work there, um, in that process. And then, lastly, I guess, I'm curious to, are, are they, is the developer gonna like extend the sidewalk past my place? Or I, I mean, I don't know how any of that works, but I was just curious what, what that involves too.
Three good questions. Uh, I'll take a stab at one of them. Uh, I think the barrier we've yet to kind of figure out in its entirety. Um, hopefully the feedback we got from the owner with the solid building and that gives you a little bit of peace of mind. Uh, and typical, typical construction would be, they, they can't really excavate on your property with, obviously without permission. There is a public, uh, utility easement, I assume, at the street, probably five feet beyond the back of the sidewalk, if I had to guess.
You have eight, eight or ten usually.
And, and I imagine the paint you saw was just for locate so that they could fill out their architectural stuff and engineering stuff for their application, so. Um, and I, as construction would commence, I imagine that that, um, would not extend on to your property, but again, it would be upon the city and the application to, uh, or the, uh, contractor to kind of work through that with you if there was some, some need that arisen.
Okay, I understand.
And I, I don't know how that works in, in the public utility easement, whose responsibility that is. Is it, is it the contractor that does that to repair to normal? I know that Comcast has been doing some stuff in town, and they're, they're fairly decent about going back and fixing landscaping that gets abused and that during the process.
When it comes to utilities authority, I'm a little fuzzy on that, and then maybe.
Yeah, so, yeah, they would, is, if they disturbed areas in the right of way or did work in the right of way, they would need to, um, they would need to restore it. It, the one caveat is sometimes surface paving. Uh, there's some special rules if they have to trench or something like that, that would determine whether they have to just pave over the top or whether they have to go for a larger area. But generally, if they're working in our easement, they have to restore it.
And then as far as sidewalks, since, since you're the expert.
Yeah, so, so normally the sidewalks get built when there's an application for new development, so they would have the, the sidewalks in front of their property. When there're gaps in the sidewalks, unless we do like a local improvement district or something like that, we can't require the sidewalk to be built, um, until there's a new application for something, so. The sidewalk in front of your house wouldn't be added, but you would have the benefit of the sidewalk going around their property.
Okay. Did that hit all the points you had?
Yeah, that covered the questions that I had. Thanks.
Excellent.
Appreciate it. Yeah.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak, uh, on this application? And how about online? Do we have anybody? Okay, doesn't appear so. So if nobody's gonna jump up, we'll, uh, exit the public hearing on this and go back into the Planning Commission Meeting, of which we can make a decision as a commission. Uh, Alan, would you kindly bring up our three options, and then maybe even the conditions of approval?
Sure.
You wanna see the conditions of approval? There we go. There are the conditions. Did you wanna see the motion or the?
Uh, maybe just give us a second here to.
Okay.
Digest this real quick, and then we'll. Do, how, how much directive do you need as the planning staff with regards to that barrier? If we say six-foot CMU, is that enough?
I think it would be good to determine how long it is. Is it the length of the property line? Is it, you know, is it only, uh, you know, enough to cover where the, the car wash is? Like, yeah, I think the length would be good.
Okay.
To determine as well.
So whoever makes a motion, whatever that is.
Okay, I have a question. Now, I've been on this mission too long. We went through a car wash issue before. And I'm not really, Richard could probably help me with it, but I don't know what, why we had ended up paying the city, had to pay to move them down, down here. Is that going to be a problem with, with this one? Richard, can you help me with that one?
A little bit, considering I helped build the first one. Uh, that was built next door to a family home, and it was an open-air, uh, not enclosed car wash. And it was spraying those very costly, uh, chemicals and soaps and stuff to the neighbor, and it cost legitimately a lot to make it go away. And so, um, it, it just happened, you know.
So do you think the proposal's better than what we did, we did previous time?
I think this one is.
Okay, that's what I'm asking. I, I don't wanna get in the middle of the.
I understand perfectly. We don't need to follow the same road we hit before and do it all over again.
Exactly. I realize we got you sad, but they need to know what happened to you, so, okay.
Any other questions?
I'd make a motion to accept it with the conditions of approval.
Second. Second.
We got a motion, we have a second. We need to address number two.
Yeah, so it might be a good idea to ask the applicant to, what their plan is for the fence as far as the length goes. Just to clarify, since they were the ones that suggested the six-foot-tall concrete.
Yeah, we, we had discussed this with the client, and we were prepared to run the, um, CMU wall, the, the full length essentially, from approximately like the, the easement area up toward the corner, just, just to provide that full, uh, visual barrier and acoustic, um, screening.
You just brought up another question for me, if I might.
Sure.
Uh, how far is your building away from, uh, the neighbor's fence or property line?
The, the car wash?
Yeah.
The car wash at its closest point.
Is that five feet?
It's five feet at the closest, and then it, it turns away.
Now, I guess I'm putting myself in the homeowner's shoes and saying, would I be happy with six foot or would I be more happy with eight foot? Uh, like a chain link fence with the slats through it, you know, something that isn't gonna get blown down in the first big windstorm.
Well, right now, it's, he's proposing.
I'm just, I'm just bringing this out in my, I'm, I'm dealing with this myself in a different property.
Well, we, we, we figured that the CMU was the most substantial, long-lasting solution.
Yeah.
Um, you know, and as far as any kind of conditions to how it looks, you know, we would adhere to whatever you want us to do with like it.
I wasn't asked on my situation, so I don't want him to feel the same way.
Yeah, and, and we wanna make it right for everybody too, so.
There you go. Yeah. Okay. I, I think that's adequate.
Okay.
As long as we're out of the sightline of the, the right of way, and.
Yeah.
We can make a note of that in the application.
So if, if Commissioner Perkins could just confirm that, that her intent was, uh, the same as theirs, that the fence run along the, the length of the property line, that would be helpful for staff and for our minutes.
Yeah, that, that is what I was thinking. I mean, it's what it looked like in.
Yeah.
Alan's drawing anywhere.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second, we have a little bit of discussion. Do we need to discuss further? Doesn't appear so. So, uh, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. So I can pass this. Okay, so, uh, as far as the application goes, staff will take care of finalizing everything, adding a note with the six-foot CMU fence, uh, where it's needed.
Will do.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Moving right along, we have conditional use twenty twenty-five dash zero two dash S, the Estacada Community Fellowship, uh, requesting their facility at five ninety-five Northwest Industrial Way. And Alan, I assume you're the staff on this one again?
I am.
All right, let's do it.
Let me pull that up. All right, this is another conditional use.
That was pretty clean.
Okay. Right. So this is staff's report on twenty twenty-five dash zero two dash C U Estacada Community Fellowship. All right, so the, the applicant is Estacada Community Fellowship, uh, currently located at two oh nine Northeast Main Street. Um, oh, that is not correct. The project manager is not Michael Holmes. Let's, let's just strike that. Okay, all right. Yeah, if you want to just say, can I, actually, yeah, this is. Okay. Um, the proposed site is five ninety-five Northwest Industrial Way. There is the legal description, and it's in the riverfront commercial zone. And the proposal, proposal is essentially to cite a church meeting and event facility in the former Ranger Station Building at the address that I just, said. Um, we received comments from the Public Works Director, the Fire Marshal, and Northwest Code Professionals, which is our building inspection, uh, consulting firm. All right, here's an aerial shot of the property. Um, it's west of Highway two twenty-four and Northwest Industrial Way and east of the river. And so if you look closely, there's an L-shaped building on the site, which is the current home of Estacada Timber School, which is a daycare. Um, the rest of the property is paved, got a scattering of trees there, um, but it's mostly. Um, the rest of the property is paved, got a scattering of trees there, um, but it's mostly a parking lot. Um, let's see, yeah, the cop plan here. So Riverfront Commercial, as I said, we have the, um, open space zone to the, to the west and, um, the mill area mixed use zone to the right across the freeway or the highway. And here's a site plan that was submitted by the applicant. So the proposed location of the meeting space is proposed in blue. Um, and it's surrounded by a variety of uses. It's labeled here. We've got a mechanical contractor to the northwest. We have to have an undeveloped lot to the north. And then, as I mentioned, the daycare to the south. Okay. So, um, the approval criteria for the Riverfront Commercial Zone is in sixteen dot thirty four and as, as shown here, event spaces and meeting facilities, not accessory to a use permitted outright are a conditional use in the Riverfront Commercial Zone. And staff reviewed this section as well for standards and found that all relevant criteria can also be met or can be met with conditions of approval, including the parking requirements and any future signage. Okay, so sixteen eighty eight is the conditional use chapter. I'll quickly go over the five criteria again. We went over these just a few minutes ago for the previous application. So those are proposed useless lists as a conditional use, site characteristics are suitable, suitable. The proposed development is timely, can be supported by existing systems. Use will not alter the character in a way that limits or impairs the use of surrounding properties. And the proposal satisfies goals and policies of the comprehensive plan. And we find that all criteria in this section can be met with conditions of approval. And so again, sixteen eighty eight dot O two O gives the planning commission authority to impose additional conditions, which are considered necessary to protect the best interest of the surrounding area and the city as a whole. Um, so sometimes staff or our agency partners, uh, we miss important details about a proposal or we overlook things that might cause issues down the road. So I'm just giving you a reminder that you have the authority to impose additional conditions if you find a reason to. And here's another list of the possible types of conditions. Alright, and our recommendation is to approve this application. And I'll just go over the four conditions of approval that we recommend. This approval will be limited to a meeting and event space in the proposed location. A change of occupancy would be required, um, per the details from the, um, fire marshal and Northwest code professionals. There are signage conditions attached, including requirement to obtain ODOT approval for signs that are visible from highway two twenty four. That's a, that's a code requirement. And that conditional use approval would be valid for two years, meaning that, um, the church would have two years in which to move into the facility before the, um, approval would expire. And that's all I have.
Any questions for staff? I have one on the comment and fire.
True.
Marshall, name? Just sort of last sentence, they're hard to give an approval with a broad overview of such a large building and multiple uses going on with multiple. Is that normal? I mean, that, that seems like a weird comment. The plan's pretty delineated as far as half of it's.
I think at the time that Sarah, the fire marshal made that comment, there was not a lot of information. So I think there was, there was supplemental information submitted after that point.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just thought highlighted and it kind of caught my attention.
Oh, right. Yeah. Yeah. I think at that point it was just basically, here's the building, here's the chunk of it that will be used for the, for the, um, meeting space and that was it. So there was no like idea of like what the building layout was and what the current occupancy was and.
Okay.
Yeah.
So they're, they're sharing the building with the daycare?
Yes. Yeah, be part of, there's a firewall and yes, it'd be totally separated.
Okay, uh, any questions for staff before we jump into the public hearing? Doesn't appear so. I already read the statement about evidence. Uh, if the applicant would like to come to the mic and give a Reader's Digest version or, uh, just give us a rundown. If, if we miss anything, uh, you're more than welcome. By no means you have to. And then we'll allow anybody else to come up as well. Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on behalf of the application? Or against it for that matter? Doesn't appear so. We just got a lot of support, quiet support out there if we like it.
Wow.
Okay, uh, and just to check online, doesn't look like there's anybody except for staff and city. So let's do this. Let's go ahead and exit out of the public hearing without any comment and, uh, go ahead back into the planning commission meeting where we have the opportunity to make a decision.
Chair Wheeler, I motion to approve with conditions.
Second.
Moved in second quickly. I like it. Any, uh, further discussion needed? Uh, one point of clarification, conditional use is two years, but as long as they are utilizing this building, they don't have to come back and re-up, right?
Yes.
Perfect. Alright, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries. Alright, Alan will, uh, be your go-to for finalizing any paperwork and then, uh, making this official. Thank you all. So we have some staff, uh, or some planning commission business. It's our next item on the agenda. Let me get to the right spot. We'll let them exit real quick, uh, and then we're going to jump into reviewing applicants. Um, it's been a while since we've done this. So staff and, uh, Peter and Lena chime in if, if need be. We have a handful of applicants for the planning commission itself. Some of, uh, the members are terming out. And, uh, is this a recommendation to the city council?
Correct. This would be a recommendation to city council and it's on their agenda for approval on Monday. The new terms start April first, so whoever is appointed will start next month.
Okay. And just to be clear, uh, I don't see any supplemental in here. Uh, how many positions are we filling?
Four.
Four.
Four. Tara Perkins is up, Scott Stahl, Tom Sager and Richard Hartwig are, their terms are expiring. So technically four vacancies.
Okay. So what you're looking for is a recommendation from the planning commission for four people to the city council.
Correct.
Am I hearing that right?
Yes.
Okay. Is there anybody? Well, it's like we got a couple of new applicants.
And the two new applicants are in the audience if you would like to ask them questions.
Let's do that. I'm going to go with the top of my list first. John Exenberger, if you'd like to come down, introduce yourself and give us a.
I think we've seen John before.
So, uh, go ahead.
Yeah, my name is John Exenberger. I've been a resident here, uh, since about two thousand eighteen. Um, I'm really impressed with what your group's done and the potential. I think the city is at a crossroads with a lot of development. Seeing all the housing and everything built up there. And we've got a couple of main drags that are going to feed all that up there. I think there's a lot of challenges we've got in the future. And I'd love to be a part of the solution and work with you guys. I've seen what you've done and, uh, I really appreciate it. And like I said, I'd like to be a part of it.
Excellent. And just to confirm, you're a resident of the city?
Yep, I can see my driveway from right here.
Okay. And then as far as filling seats, do we have some that are just city and some that are zip code or are they all city? Okay. Okay, thank you, John.
Thank you.
Um, let's have Aaron Spence come on down.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. How you doing?
Excellent.
Good. Uh, my name's Aaron Spence. I've lived out here for a little over three years. Raising a five-year-old and a sixteen-year-old out here and, um, I'm interested in the process of what's happening with the city and and, uh, I've, uh, you know, just to mirror your point, seeing a lot of development and, uh, just want to be involved in the process.
Excellent. And again, you live in the city, Aaron?
Yes. Yeah, I'm up on, uh, Sawyer Lane, so I'm not a hundred percent sure if it's in the city.
I think it is.
We checked.
I'm pretty sure.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Any questions for everyone we got with Mike? We're, we're trying to, just so everybody knows in the room, we're trying to figure out a, a new, possibly a new meeting time. Two o'clock on a Wednesday seems to be a little bit, uh, troublesome for some or all of us, um, me included. And so, um, I imagine we've been on the daytime streak for probably what, four years? Does that sound about right? Um, and so we.
No, daytime like maybe a year and a half.
Oh, is that all?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so, uh, normally we, before we would do it at seven o'clock on a Wednesday, was it right?
I think it was. Yeah, something. It was not a Monday, that's council, but yeah.
So I, I don't know if that matters at this point in time with, uh, choosing people, but we need some flexibility in schedules. And, and we'll try to find a time that most of us can meet every time. So just a heads up, if we, we select you guys, um, there might be some moving and shaking in schedules. Uh, thanks, Aaron.
Yeah, thank you.
We have some other familiar names on here. Um, we have Richard, Scott, Tara and Tom Sager. Do we, do we want to say a piece, each of you guys to say a piece and your wish to be involved still or we need to do that? It doesn't matter to me.
I want to be in it all. I have nothing much to say.
I want to keep going too. I, I'm just starting to get rolling here, so I think, uh, I've learned a lot and I keep learning more all the time.
How long is this term? Three years?
Four.
Four.
I, I believe Scott was appointed to fill a term though. So he hasn't been, he hasn't been here four years.
Well, I've got four more years.
Okay. And Tara, I assume you're still here?
Yeah, I've had a great time and now I can finally. But it sounds like we might be changing it, but, um.
Haven't seen her since before COVID. Have we?
Yeah.
Well, there was a few meetings.
Either way, she's been very involved and it's great to see you in person.
So we have, uh, an opportunity to uh, appoint or make four selections. I, I, I can't remember the last time we did this. Do we ask for nominations? Do we have a up, down?
So you, someone will make a motion. You can either make a motion individually or as a slate and then you will second and then vote.
Okay.
And it's a recommendation to council.
Yeah, it's just a recommendation to council. Council has the final approval. However, council has said that, um, they generally accept the recommendations of the committees and they go in the consent agenda.
Okay.
But if I do the math correctly, only two people can vote on this?
No, you can vote for yourself.
Oh, you can. Okay.
I thought about that too.
Yeah.
How's that working? Uh, Chair Wheeler, no, everybody has no problem signing the code of ethics, the new.
The, the code of conduct.
Yeah, the code of conduct. All the, all of the applicants have zero issue with that, right? Last, when we installed this last year, there was a little bit of feedback. I just want to ensure going forward that that's not going to be an issue.
I think we've all signed.
Yep.
Members have. So I, I need a motion.
Unfortunately, I, I liked it. I did have two, two new people, but I like the crew that I'm working with, so I, I can keep all forms on the table here. Yeah, that's my motion.
We have a motion?
I'll second that.
And we have a second. Any discussion needed?
But they're welcome to my seat if I die.
I'm sure that'll be their first thing they want. Yeah.
Call the vote.
Okay, uh, so the current vote is Mr. Hartwig, Mr. Perkins, Mr. Sager and Commissioner Stahl.
I should probably resign. You can't never get my name right anyway.
Now, now it's easy.
Now it's easy. You can just say no and.
And again, this is a recommendation to city council. Uh, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay. Motion failed.
Okay.
We need a new motion.
New motion. I move, we move, uh, myself, Tara, uh, John and Aaron.
So moved. Need a second? I'll second for this conversation of seconding. Can I second as a, uh, chair?
Yes.
Any of you can second.
Okay. Uh, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries. So this is a recommendation to city council.
Correct. It will go in the staff report and, uh, the council will make the decision on their Monday meeting.
Okay.
And staff will email
Okay.
all, all of the people if they're appointed.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Staff will email everyone who was appointed after council makes the appointments.
Okay. So moving on, we have a April meeting. Do we know?
Yes, I believe it is April sixteenth.
April sixteenth, yes.
Yeah. And you have two applications already for it. One is a land partition and the other is a subdivision extension request. And then you'll also have your committee one oh one and planning ethics.
Okay. Uh, is that date hard and fast at this point in time?
It is. Yeah, we noticed it. Or we, you, you submitted it.
Yeah, this week. Yeah.
Okay.
So.
One, one other thing, uh, with regards to planning commission applications, uh, my term will be up at some point in time soon. Uh, and so my hope is that we find a replacement for me.
You're not, you're not leaving entirely. Do you just mean as chair?
I, I don't know.
Well, you, on your next meeting, you should select, because the new terms start, you'll select a new chair and vice chair.
Sure.
I feel like I've, uh, been on the planning commission for quite a while.
The thirty first of, of March.
I by no means resigning, but I would definitely like to find a replacement that would carry the burden of, of what this planning commission has done. So um, that's my two cents.
Your term ends, uh, twenty twenty seven.
It's okay. I, I, I could be here. I, I could stay, I can remain dedicated. Okay, any other questions? Concerns? Alright, let's adjourn at, uh, two forty six.